Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order at six o'clock and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, United States of America, Intuit Republic, what you say is one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay, adjustments, I see none.
Uh, John, we do have an adjustment.
Okay, what would you like to do?
I'd like to remove old business K1. The sabbatical request has been rescinded um by the uh school nurse due to progression changes in her courses.
Oh, gotcha, that makes sense. Uh, I'll make a motion to eliminate uh item K1. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Rue. Any discussion? All set, all in favor? All in favor, those unanimous, Matt? Okay, anything else, Matt?
No, that's it.
Okay. Uh, so next we have approval of minutes. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, February 2nd, 2021, budget meeting at 4:00 PM, and Monday, February 22nd, 2021, ranking the meeting at 6:00 PM. Do we have a second? Second for Mr. Rue. Uh, any discussion, anybody? Okay, all in favor? All in favor, those unanimous again, Matt? Okay, next we have public comments. Uh, doesn't look like we have anybody on that would be making a public comment. Is there anybody that would like to make a public comment? Uh-oh, uh-oh, I thought there was a fire alarm, I thought we were gonna release the building. Just Amy's phone, everybody, it's okay.
It's my friend.
For Amy, that probably is a fire.
Yes.
Okay, so, no public comments. Uh, communications, I see none, you don't have anything popped up right now?
No.
Okay, then we have the committee reports, uh, construction updates. Mr. Nelson, the floor is yours.
I'll start with the high school and technical center. Our architect, Lavalley Brenziger Associates, was on site last week to verify an issue with missing insulation at the main entrance. And they issued a field report um calling for added foam insulation. Our contractor, Hutter, was notified of the owner's intent to perform the work, and they have since responded with a desire to perform the work themselves. And um, a time is being set up to be able to do that, they're coordinating here with the administration at the high school. Uh, there have been no changes made uh beyond that at the high school technical center. Uh, the punch list remains at twenty-eight items with value roughly fifty thousand in work. Uh, retainage does remain over three hundred dollars, but it should be pointed out that that also lists about half of that, a hundred and fifty thousand, in additional A and E fees to be backcharged to Hutter due to construction delays and failure to complete the punch list. Uh, one of the most significant items on the punch list is the balancing of the HVAC system. The HVAC units are still experiencing trips on cold mornings. And although the mechanical contractor has been on response of the issue, Briggs Equipment, the original supplier of the units, has been reviewing possible causes on site. Also, the engineer has also been reviewing that with Briggs. Um, we suspect it's likely due to a startup sequencing issue not being set up properly. So the school department, we've set up access for the engineer to see the units and data through the building automation system to better inform them of what is happening. And then Briggs is also reporting to us uh into the group of what they find on site as well. Uh, I wanted to give an update uh where we stand. Uh, if you remember, there was a mediation between a subcontractor, Warren Mechanical, and the contractor, Hutter. Uh, so Warren brought suit against Hutter in Superior Court in York County. So after mediation failed, Hutter filed a third-party complaint against the Sanford School Department and the architect, Lavalley Brenziger Associates, alleging that if Warren's claims on the expansion coils and the dust collection wiring are valid, then the school department or Lavalley Brenziger are responsible for paying the extra costs. So our legal counsel filed a motion to dismiss the third-party complaint against the Sanford School Department on the grounds that the contract requires arbitration. Lavalley Brenziger, they plan to file a motion to dismiss the third-party claims against it on the grounds that there's no contract between Hutter, Warren, and LBA, and for that reason, LBA cannot be sued by them. LBA wants the judge to decide the issue rather than an arbitrator. Uh, Hutter's attorney has asked us whether we'll be joining LBA into the arbitration with Hutter, and we plan to answer that we have no intention of adding LBA as a third party to the arbitration at this time, as the school department has no direct claim against it and we feel adequately protected by the indemnification provision set forth in the contract, should the uh contractor, should Hutter prevail against the Sanford School Department. So uh, to kind of get that out of uh lawyer uh legalese, in uh, we want LBA on our side in the arbit- arbitration, and then if Hutter convinces the arbitrator that Warren's claims are valid, then and only then would we look to LBA for payment of the arbitration award. So if brought into the arbitration now, LBA will assert defenses to its liability for any errors or admissions in the plans and the specification, like betterment or no plan is perfect, that is what a contingency is for. And so our legal counsel believes those defenses presented in Hutter's arbitration will weaken our defense and are better dealt with if and only if Hutter convinces the arbitrator that Warren's claims have any merit. So if the Superior Court judge denies LBA's motion to dismiss and concludes that Warren and Hutter can sue LBA directly, then our legal counsel would seek to join LBA in the Hutter arbitration. So that is the latest update for the high school and the technical center project.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, hey, Matt, I just um, I'm not gonna play a lawyer for a second, but you said Superior Court, is, is there any way you can get this into the business court? There is such a thing.
Okay, um, I don't know, it's uh...
It's more direct, i- i- and the folks involved are a little more business, I mean, the judges and lawyers involved are a little more business-minded?
Yep.
Lawsuit, maybe the next one?
Yeah, way to plan ahead, Jonathan.
Yeah, and I think, I know in conversations with our legal counsel, we really want arbitration rather than in a, in a court situation in front of a jury. Our, our hope is that the documents are strong, our case is strong um for that, so we'd rather just stick right to the best we can to an arbitrator.
Okay. Uh, onward to the elementary schools, Mr. Nelson.
Sure, so um, for our converted elementary school, Sanford Pride Elementary School, the project is still reported to be behind schedule by a couple to a few weeks. Uh, we had a construction meeting last week and a core building committee um meeting to bring everyone up to speed. Uh, the contractor, Structure Tone, is preparing an updated project schedule to show, and what we've asked them to show us is how they intend to finish the project in the schedule, how they plan to make up any ground that they can in the remaining schedule, also to show the critical path to the end of the schedule, identify how much additional time they're looking at to complete the project. Our, our architect has discussed with the contractor um are the following potential uh concerns that we have as a school department when you start talking about an additional schedule. Those concerns include additional general condition costs, we want to make sure we can allow time for our teachers and staff to prepare for the next school year, and uh a request to come to the well once for time, not additional requests unless absolutely warranted due to changes to scope. Our owner's representative from the main DOE was on site uh last week, um, and he's commented uh that um it's night and day between the progress and work from the middle school project to this project by the Structure Tone team. Structure Tone has a different team on this project than they did in the middle school project. Uh, if, in regards to the scope in progress, the drywall is nearing completion in Area A and ongoing in the other areas. They are doing first coat painting in Area A, remember, Area A is the kindergarten wing up um closest to the tennis courts. Framing in the lower areas is ongoing, nearing completion. Area A toilet rooms tile work began last week. The mechanical duct work is ninety percent completed. Plumbing work inspected in Area A, Area B, and C installations is in progress, it's nearly complete in Area B. Area A electrical work is being inspected this week. Electrical A and B, uh, electrical area B and C is ongoing. Uh, regarding field review items, the smoke ceiling of the corridor walls appears to be more, more extensive than initially reviewed in the field. Uh, an allowance is being utilized to patch some areas. Uh, the determination, the scope is in progress. The gym slab in flooring is under review, the flooring sub is unwilling to warranty the flooring on the existing slabs. They are requesting, requesting pinning of the existing control joints. Uh, Harriman finds that this will create additional joints as a two-foot trench needs to be cut at each joint to dowel a new poured slab at infills. The existing joints do not show signs of cracking, there's some signs of curling that could be ground down. Um, concerned that the process will add lots of cost to the project, their slab does not fall into the required floor flatness of um one-eighth inch, ten-foot common with flooring manufacturers, and this will require grinding and filling of slabs to accomplish. Regarding the electrical code review items, there have been numerous found electro- electrical code items that the authority having jurisdiction is requiring to be remediated above ceilings. Area A scope has been identified and approved. Area B scope has been identified and awaiting approval. Area C scope will be reviewed once the ceiling of one space has been completed. These items reviewed with the uh AHJ in the field will likely result in extra costs exceeding sixty thousand dollars. Technology-driven changes are being discussed and reviewed, and items there um following our Joan Wright uh requests, a car in, in the um core building committee as well as the school department, card reader A125A, that's out back uh from where the uh younger um playground will be. The IDF room change uh is under review, the teaching walls relocation changes are under review, the wireless access point relike, relocations are under review, and the Promethean Board hazmat drilling is awaiting final approval, approvals, and existing clock system to be reviewed. Um, with that, these are all funds that we would have in our bond, a local bond that was approved. And then some of the other owner-requested items as part of the bond as well. The classroom divider curtains have been removed, uh, the carpet um in the uh library is being uh replaced, the stage curtain, curtain in the uh cafeteria, uh, they've issued a proposal request to Structure Tone back in February, we're awaiting a response. Uh, we also issued a proposal request for ceiling tiles, grids, and lights in the corridors at the beginning of March, we're waiting a response. Harriman is reviewing the classroom replacements in common areas as separate requests. Um, as I mentioned, the card reader uh near the play area has been accepted. Uh, we also has part of our local bond painting, so that's an odor item, and right now Susan Immon and Don Nichols will be meeting with Harriman and then our painter uh to go over scope. The gym canopy, uh Harriman has reviewed the signage with uh the school department last week, and will be issuing a proposal request um this week. Window shades replacement proposal request was issued back in January, we're still awaiting Structure Tone's response. At the core building c- uh committee meeting last week, uh, we reviewed many of the above, above items or the items I've listed, uh, talked about already. Another item we talked about was the signage at the building exterior, and so um there'll be a lettering at the sale of SPE uh for Sanford Pride Elementary, and then the main entry is gonna say Sanford Pride Elementary, and then the gym entry, the sign is gonna say Pride Gymnasium. Uh, we are looking at the entrance siding for a color change. Right now, uh, the imagery shows, uh, we'd like to have red instead of blue, uh, if possible. Um, there is a concern that the blue items have already been purchased by Structure Tone, and the inquiry on cost difference have changed. We have to find out if, uh, if has, has already been purchased, uh, what that cost would be um for that, and also project uh budgets.
Matt, can you stop for a second? I, I filled the school committee in kind of on the side here about that color thing, um, because I was listening to that core building committee meeting. Uh, it's, I'd be curious what other school committee members think of that. The entrance right now, the old junior high entrance, what, what we think the panels are already purchased, a blue. Comment to core building committee or someone on the call that it's, you know, another school's colors, shouldn't we have red? Same with the panels above the, what will be called the Pride Gymnasium in the lower level, same thing, it's, it's calling for blue panels, any input on that?
I guess the question is why blue?
I, I can't answer that, can't answer that, that kind of goes back to maybe a core building committee discussion, architectural designs. I, I don't know the ins and the outs, but...
To me, that would be up to Structure Tone to pay for, to be replaced if they're the ones that ordered it blue when the Sanford's colors are red all day long.
I'm not sure, maybe we asked them to.
Oh, for that?
That's, that's what I'm asking, why? You have any input on that, Matt, why it was blue?
Yeah, I'm trying to bring it up, um, I'm trying to bring it up so you can see it.
That'd kind of be surprising, the core building committee would go through.
Purpose, right?
And, 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 well, Matt's looking at it, when he hears the word sail, as you look at the, what I call the old junior high entrance, off to the right, there's a, it's like this ductwork, there's a piece of building that kind of sticks out.
Yeah.
You know, kind of fancy schanty a little bit, that's what they call it, a sail, and on that, the letters will come down on both sides, say, letters of the school in silver, silver, here it is.
Yeah, you'll see, um, I don't know if people can see my arrow on the screen, uh, but here, over here is where the uh, the sail we're talking about, Sanford Pride Elementary there, so if you're driving down the, from the road, the street, you could be able to see that as it jets out. From the, coming the other way, there'd be another one over here, and then here you have the Sanford Pride Elementary, and what you have is the blue. And so that was something that um, at the end of the day, that was something that was in the initial plans in spec um for that, and so um, as it was, at the end of the day, uh, ultimately, probably as superintendent, I have to rece- have responsibility for that in the event that it was blue and not the Sanford colors of red. So uh, right now, it looks like that um Structure Tone had already bought um the blue paneling. So that, we're, right now, we're looking at, if that is the case, what would be the cost to replace the blue with the red?
Can it just be painted, Matt?
I don't think so, John, no, I don't, I think it's a special uh kind of pan- uh paneling. Um, probably to restrain some of the elements outside, uh, I'm guessing, so...
I don't know, for me, if it's a big expense, I mean, to me, like, the school colors are like the high school, even junior high thing, when you start talking elementary, I mean, I actually think at the elementary level, it should be a bunch of different colors and more of a kind of rainbow-y type thing, just to stimulate uh the children, but that's just maybe...
I wonder if it was chosen blue for aesthetic purposes, because if you have it in red, it'll look with the brick?
Yeah, I don't agree.
So maybe that was the reason one?
So, yeah.
In that case, it does make sense that you would choose a different color other than red, but...
Just, I just wanted to bring it up so the school committee was aware of it, and we can...
Yep, no, and that's why it was part of the report here. There's the part of the gymnasium, uh, just so that if you have people unfamiliar with Sanford who are coming for the gymnasium, they'll be able to see that entrance down below.
The blue bugs me. See, I thought it would bug me too, because if they're not, it's not Sanford color, but I like the way it stands out. Whereas if it was in red, it wouldn't stand out as much.
Silver, on, because of the brick?
The, yeah.
Yeah, I'm with you, I agree. Well, I think, maybe I asked, or I just think I asked, where that's a brilliant architectural rendering, and that gets deep into that, I go back to Crayola 001, if they could do that same thing in red, to show us...
Right, who knows?
So right, right now, the, the core building...
Right, it'd be good to see it though, if it's possible, if it's just a matter of...
I just want people to know that we are discussing it, and there are folks who don't like the blue because it doesn't represent Sanford. There are people that don't like the name, so just want to know that people, just want people to know that we're talking about it, that's, I'm good.
Yeah, and so, as I, as Jonathan mentioned, this came up at um last Thursday night's core building committee meeting, so we are gathering information to go back and share that with the core building committee, and also share it with the school committee as well to keep everyone abreast of what's going on.
Thank you. Sounds good. Anything else for the elementary schools, Matt?
Yeah, I wanted to bring people up to speed there as well, because uh, the contractor's legal counsel has reached out to us regarding the escalation charges, and uh, we have reviewed that with our legal counsel, and so our legal counsel has responded formally to them with our legal basis for our position, which is um, we've reviewed the escalation charges, order proposals, and it's our uh conclusion that they are barred from recovering escalation costs by the terms of the contract. And so parties to a contract are permitted at the time of contract formation to waive consequential damages if they so choose. And Structure Tone insisted during contract negotiations that its Exhibit C be included as part of the contract, and that document itself states explicitly that if there is any inconsistency or discrepancy between the language of that Exhibit C and other documents, including the state of main standard general conditions, then Exhibit C shall govern and take priority over all of the contract documents. So paragraph four of Exhibit C states, neither party to the agreement shall be responsible to the other for any punitive, special, or consequential damages arising out of or relating to this contract. It gives some examples of consequential damages that might be incurred by Structure Tone, for example, principal office expenses, losses of financing, business and reputation, and lost profit. So if you look at Structure Tone's change order proposals, they clearly state that they involve escalation costs at the converted elementary school, they involve price escalation in labor and materials at the converted elementary school as a result of delays that happened at the converted middle school. Structure Tone claims that the Sanford School Department caused delays to the project as a result of asbestos dust at the converted middle school, and uh, it remains our position, the Sanford School Department's, that we didn't, but Structure Tone subcontractor was responsible for the asbestos-related delay. So if we were to accept their premise for just purposes of the discussion, then Structure Tone's position is that the asbestos was a latent or unforeseen condition that delayed the work, and so direct damages were those that flowed necessarily from that unforeseen condition. And our legal counsel does uh cite some other um cases in the past uh that shows that uh direct damages are the necessary and natural consequence of a breach of contract. So uh, we're asking Structure Tone to review the backup material that their own attorney provided uh back when we were, eh, back in February, um, when they were looking at examples of what they've said were their alleged, alleged direct damages. And in that, they talked about demobilization costs, remobilization costs, storage costs, and cost to replace materials damaged by weather, and damages like those are always flow directly from an unforeseen condition that causes delay. But if you look at that, the change order request that they're seeking recovery of costs are not obviously gonna be incurred because of the delay um for that. Construction delays do not necessarily result in price increases for materials or increases in hourly labor rates. Escalation costs are consequential damages and have been waived by Structure Tone, getting back to their Exhibit C of the contract. If there are elements of the change order request that do not involve price increases for materials, increased labor rates, or increased costs of employee benefits, then we invite the contractor to point that out, and we will review it um with that. So whether an item of damage is direct or consequential is a question of law, and we feel that's something that an arbitrator could resolve without the parties incurring substantial uh litigation costs. So I just wanted to keep everyone up to date, I had a meeting today with our legal counsel and Department of Education, just to continue to review that. So um, that's the latest. Any questions on um the Sanford Pride Elementary project?
I don't know. It doesn't look like any, man.
It just amazes me how much time we spend talking about legal issues in COVID-19, you have to get back to education someday soon, like, thank you for that, Matt, it's gotta be extremely tormenting to deal with this stuff.
Yeah, tormenting probably feels about right, yeah.
I read, I, I read what you just, I read earlier before I came in, I just thought, oh my, this is, there's nothing about education in any of that report.
Right.
It's, it's, the amount of time that's been put into, uh, Matt's life and administrators' lives is just simply, yeah, it's overwhelming and I, I would say unnecessary.
Yeah, unfair, yeah.
Unfair.
You know, so the, the, the negatives to uh the positives of our new schools.
Yeah, I know.
The legal phase?
Yeah, the behind-the幕 stuff is...
Yeah. Thank you for hanging in there, Matt, because...
Yeah, and, and you know, it's frustrating, but I do remain that, uh, remember, these are uh, for the most part, state-supported projects, and with our citizens stepping up with the bonds, we're gonna get there and it's gonna be good, it's just frustrating that the process and where it is, but I do know when we do get there, it's gonna be a project that um the community and everyone's proud of.
But, and, and people just need to know that although we all debate getting back to school and things that we'd like to improve in our school system, the amount of time that you're being asked to participate in almost non-school endeavors, people need to know that. So, thank you.
Um, anything else for the construction or legal updates, as we're gonna start calling them?
No, we're, that's good for them.
Uh, Paula, Sanford Performing Arts Committee, got anything for us tonight?
Yes, I do. Uh, a couple of comments and just a couple of informative statements. So I don't know if everybody has heard that the Cinematic in Westbrook and Saco in South Portland are all closing?
All shutting down.
All shutting down, so all that leaves is Spitties, and then it leaves Portland and Sanford, where Performing Arts Center. So I think that'd be very good, not just for the school, but for town.
Are you opening a movie theater?
Sorry?
Are you opening a movie theater? No, the only thing that I've left is like a bar built next to it, they're gonna get going every Saturday.
So everybody's gonna start coming and do all the arts and theater stuff here, okay?
Okay, all right, all right, good.
Right? You'll be the first one by ticket, I know?
I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Um, what else? Uh, we've got two dance recitals set for the spring, for the Jazz and Tap and Dance, and for DSOM, and in May, the school's gonna be presenting their Spring Musical, and in the Broadway review that is called The Show Must Go On. And from what I hear, it's gonna be really fun, and it'll be fun, right? And there's Jagger and Bee in it?
Yeah.
Um, they've worked really hard to make sure that, you know, everybody's COVID safe, and they group the kids into four cohorts, right? That's the key word.
We've used it, I understand.
Four different cohorts. And they've all been practicing and kind of creating these Broadway um reviews on their own, so we'll see what happens, but I'm excited about that. Uh, booking is continuing for shows this coming year, and we'll definitely be presenting between late November and spring of 2022. Um, and as far as Governor Mills expanding the total capacity numbers, uh, we still have to maintain the six-foot distance between family groups, and we still have to have every other row closed, but it's still good news because now we can see about somewhere between thirty to forty percent capacity, which is better than our fifty. So we're moving in the right direction.
Thanks, Paula. Uh, WSSR TV, we do have a call scheduled later this week, uh, so nothing really on that front. Um, adult education, anything you want to share with us, I know we have Nicole on later.
I brought my own personal presentation, should be presenting later, thank you.
How fancy of you.
Well, I like to, I'm too old of you.
Okay, so now we'll get on to the superintendent's reports, uh, student reps, uh, Grace actually emailed me, uh, she once again has a... She once again has Molly Ball, so she won't be here tonight. I did actually catch some of the game on Saturday since I've been calibrizing them. And Grace was doing a really good job setting her teammates. She was a pinnacle on that front line.
She got her name in the poll in the first round Sunday for 15 assists, so I'd forget exactly.
Mr. Peterman was doing the commentary. I don't want to take this wrong, but I think we might have to get a color guy to work with him. He needs a little help, I think.
Molly Ball in general?
He was doing okay. You know, he kind of needed that weird manner off of somebody. He was just down on his own, so.
Are you volunteering?
Oh, no. Nobody wants that. So let's go to, I think I saw Bella. Do you have anything to share with us?
Yeah, so I had some things actually about the musical. And so it is The Show Must Go On and we're basically, the whole kind of theme is about time. And so we have different pieces from Broadway shows throughout time. And I'm actually singing one of them. So. But yeah, so we start rehearsals this Tuesday. And yep, we do have different cohorts and there's a cleaning time in between and everything. So everybody's safe and, and staying with COVID guidelines. And it should be good. And then I had another thing about the survey that we talked about for getting some students' opinions on the schedule and what issues they may have. So we do have that and that should be going out pretty soon, within the next week or two. Just to get the conversation started, like with students, make sure they're feeling involved and get some of their insight personally on how they either have or haven't been set up for success with their schedule. And to see what areas, because obviously we can't make huge changes right now due to a lot of COVID limitations and staffing limitations. But what we can, what, what problems are really impacting students so that we can best address those whatever ways we can.
Excellent. Thanks, Paula. I think I actually chatted with Grace briefly last week about the survey that you guys wanted to do. I think it's great to see you guys kind of taking the initiative to get out there and pull something like that together, so.
I would just caution you, Bill, I agree with Don just a caution you to not lead your fellow students down a certain path with any great promises and expectations that we can't deliver. So just getting their, getting their input, absolutely, but just be careful.
Yeah, that's kind of the main goal. And we've like tried to make it clear that obviously this isn't like a decision-making survey. It's just really to get students' opinions, then to get like what they've experienced personally, to see how we can best help.
Awesome. Thanks, Bella.
I know with, I know, I have an upcoming eight, or upcoming freshman, and I have a freshman right now who's going to be a sophomore. And I know that they're both excited about the, you know, the skinny fifth block. You know, because obviously the freshmen didn't get to have, or any of you guys got to try the skinny block for next, for this year because of COVID. But I know that, I looked at the long, long lists of what is going to be up for next year and it's exciting.
Well, I think that's scheduled conversation stuff going on the horizon for us, so. Okay, thanks, Bella. Juliana, do you have anything?
I do not have any updates for tonight.
Thanks. Okay, then let's move on. We've got school announcements. Matt, I'm not sure what that is exactly.
Well, if you remember at last meeting, School Committee had a suggestion, Amy had a suggestion to make sure that similar to what we're able to do with our student reps for the high, for the high school primarily, if we could also share a lot of the other good news that's going on in the district. You know, Jonathan just mentioned earlier that it seems some ways we're getting away from education with some of the issues and things that we're discussing. And nothing against those issues, but that's not why we're here and that's not why we get excited. So I've got some updates I'd like to share tonight from our various schools of some things that just happen to go on to give people a little bit of insight of some of the cool things that are happening. At the high school, there's some good news on the horizon with Governor Mills coming back out with the restrictions around meeting. Right now, there's some excitement and optimism around the class of 2021, being able to have a graduation week and an outdoor graduation at Alumni Stadium. So obviously, it's still not going to be exactly like our normal graduation, but we're definitely heading in the right direction. With that, I think it lines up for us to be able to do that nicely since we do have graduation out on Alumni, at Alumni Stadium for that. So there might have to be some restrictions to attendance with that, but we continue to cross our fingers and hope that's good news. Also, this year, the high school has been recognizing, they've recognized over 60 staff members of the month this year. And they have honored over 200 different students with some of the following awards. Students of the Month, High Five Awards, and Spartan Pride Awards with that. And that continues to grow each month as they're trying to recognize students there. Margaret Chase Smith School, the students at MCS have been participating in a Book Madness. I think that's a takeaway from the Basketball March Madness. Their Book Madness is a tournament of books. Various staff members have selected 16 texts to record and share with students throughout the month. And then each morning, there's a guest reader is revealed during their morning announcements. And during snack, students enjoy the recording and discuss their favorite parts with classmates. And then at the end of the week, the students vote for their favorite two books as they narrow their choices down to the Elite Eight and Final Four. Carl J. Lamb School, many classrooms participated in the Compassion Month Kindness Connects Us Challenge. Students complimented one another in practice accepting compliments. The best part was that the compliments were hung throughout the school, connecting the classrooms and lining the halls for all to read and enjoy. Mrs. Scremin, the school counselor, made paper change of all the compliments and students are going to be able to bring them home for their families to enjoy as well. For March, schools are focusing on the core value of courage. At CGL, school librarian Mrs. Milano is challenging students to recognize courageous people from clues on their bulletin board. And students are reading about the, these heroes in Pebble Go autobiographies. And some classes are bravely sharing the books they have written with their whole class and others are courageously working on opinion writing. And then finally, the Kindness Club is writing thank you notes to courageous people spreading kindness by writing to their retirement home pen pals and continuing the compliments with lucky to know you shamrocks. At Willard School, Mrs. Pears and her first graders experienced a book bistro last week. And that's Lessons Learning Target Focusing on Literacy Skills. That was a fun way to celebrate the ending of the opinion writing unit and get students excited to move into the nonfiction unit. Mrs. Pear shared a variety of nonfiction books students typically do not see, such as cookbooks and nonfiction books that have illustrations instead of real photographs to help students focus on content rather than the stigma that nonfiction can only have real pictures. The student desks were set up with a tablecloth and a menu to provide feedback at the end of the lessons. And students were highly engaged in practicing a range of literacy skills with nonfiction books, such as identifying vocabulary words, working on identifying vowels, and identifying the title and offer. Moving on to SRTC, Jen Bartlett, the SRTC Career Planning Coordinator reports that as of the beginning of March, 85 of the 233 seniors at SRTC have completed the FAFSA. And this is a federal financial aid forum that's a critical step for any student who's considering enrolling in a post-secondary educational institution next year. The Landscape and Horticulture Program at SRTC took the opportunity to stretch their legs and reconnect with their farming partners like McDougall Orchards and Ferment Farm, both of Springvale. March is a perfect month, moment to prune many trees, especially fruit trees. And agricultural pruning is a very important piece of the landscape and horticulture curriculum. So the class benefited from that field trip and the experience, and the experience. And then last Friday, students in the Fire Science Program participated in a training in an automobile exercise using the jaws of life. And SRTC and the school department were grateful for the firefighters from Sanford and Acton who volunteered to assist with this training. And Chandler's Automotive and Towing, who made vehicles available for the event. Photos of the events were taken by the Digital Design Program. And video coverage was also provided by SRTC's Video Production Program. Over at the middle school, they're making the best out of March. Each week, they've been doing a school-wide School Spirit Day. They, themes vary from Crazy Hair Day, Costume Day, Hawaiian Day, Crazy Sports Fan, Wacky Musician Artist. They have much more on the docket. Their school library just got a huge shipment of new books. And students are eager to get their hands on some good reading. Kudos to band instructors Dee Ames and Caleb Burke, who are able to host full band. They've explored some creative options so they can safely play their, so our students can safely play their instruments and put together some beautiful music. Some of that creativity includes them going outside. I don't think they were outside today because it was really cold. And a big thank you to the PTA for putting on an incredible, incredible winter luau for all the grades last Thursday and Friday. Some of the comments from the students were, this is the best day ever. Can we do this again? Woo-hoo, I love this school. And thank you to the PTA for sponsoring a March Madness raffle for staff each day with cool prizes to win. So that's just some of the things going on to give you a little flavor of some of the cool, neat things that are happening in our schools.
Excellent. And that was a great recommendation by Amy. Let's get back to some of the happy stuff and not just legal discussion.
That's fine, no offense.
Now you gotta work on your woo-hoo.
Are you ready to entertain a motion to adjourn? I say we leave on that note. No, just kidding. All right.
It looks like we got a turn to in-person learning update?
We got some good news to report on that. We continue to make progress. Fayette County will remain in the green status. And so we continue as a state and a county to experience positive steps in the reduction of positive cases of COVID-19. You're also seeing the increase in the number of vaccines for staff and members of the public have received with that. This is all good news. I do want to point out, though, that there are still restrictions in place that we must observe and thinking about, and what we've been able to observe in trying to increase our in-person learning. Those really get down to the six requirements from the MDOE with that, and we're continuing to use that. Kudos to our schools and our administrators for being able to work hard to try to stay within those, but also see how we can increase learning. Governor Mills recently, in her administration, released information about plans to increase the maximum number of people in a public space. If you remember, we used to be limited to 50. They've also released information along with travel and tourism updates. But some of the key points of interest for schools are that for indoor gatherings, the percentage of capacity will increase to 50% starting March 26 and 75% starting May 24. I do want to say that comes with a big asterisk that all health and safety requirements are still required, including mask wearing and the three-to-six-foot distancing. Regarding number of people in a public space for outdoor gatherings, the percentage of capacity will increase to 75% starting March 26 and 100% starting May 24, but comes with another asterisk. All health and safety requirements are still required, including the mask wearing and the three-to-foot, six, three-to-six-foot distancing. Also, effective, effective immediately travel between Maine, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Rhode Island is now permissible without the need for testing or quarantine for that. Today, we expanded our in-person learning from two days a week to four days a week at our elementary schools and Sanford High School. By all indications, it went well. It kind of felt like, again, the first day of school again for us to be able to do that. But as I said, kudos to our students, kudos to our families, kudos to our staff and administration for all of their plans. And kudos to our transportation and our busing to be able to try to make this work. Everything's impacted from pickup and drop-off to class sizes and school procedures and whatnot. I know that at Margaret Chase Smith and Willard, they had, they were celebrating the occasion with some dancing sharks. I know at Willard, they had a lion trying to get into the future Sanford Pride theme with that. So it was nice to see. I got around the buildings today. I was able to get to down at Margaret Chase Smith School in the high school. And I know Steve was able to get over to Carl J. Lamb. And now you're seeing what kind of feels like in a lot of ways is some sense of normalcy when you start looking at, into the classrooms and start seeing things filled up with that. So kudos there. I did want to update on a four-day-a-week in-person learning at Sanford Middle School. The middle school continues to work hard and vet all of their requests through their teams and for all of grades five through eight. They've had over about 300 requests. So the cafeteria and the gym have been reviewed for the additional students following current CDC and fire code guidelines. Additional tables and dividers have been set up. Desk chairs and dividers are going to be delivered this week on Wednesday to accommodate the additional students. And so right now, the middle school is looking at accommodating approximately 260 students. And they're looking to do that next Monday, the 22nd. They hope to start making phone calls tomorrow. I noticed that there were about, I said 300 requests. The middle school is optimistic and confident as they continue to work that they're hoping to honor all of those requests for the people who have, who are currently going two days, who would like to go four days. Where it's going to be difficult and challenging for them, like it is in, in all of our schools, is for some of our students who are currently full remote, learning remote. That may be difficult to be able to accommodate any of those requests for people to come back into in-person learning right now. So we're still continuing to accommodate as many students as the space allows. Last Friday, representatives from the MDOE and Community Development, DHHS, the Maine Principals Association, the Athletic Directors Association, the Governor's Office, the School Board Association, the Superintendent's Association met to review suggested revisions to the guidelines for spring sports. And there were general agreements by all parties of the combined recommendations. And the guidelines for community sports and activities align with those put forth by the Maine Principals Association. So more information to follow, but I think that is some good news for spring sports. And then finally, Lizzie Garnett, our COVID-9 outbreak investigator for DHHS and the Maine CDC, she reached out regarding the status of Sanford High School's COVID-19 outbreak. It's been over 14 days since the most recent cases test collection on February 23, which means it meets the criteria to temporarily end the outbreak status. They're going to continue to monitor us for another 14 days. And if there are no additional qualifying cases by March 23, then the outbreak status will not be restarted. Remember, an outbreak status ends temporarily when the school's gone without a case for 14 days and officially ends after 28 days after the last positive test or symptom onset date, whichever is later. And these are federal CDC requirements with that. And so for a case to qualify towards our outbreak, the student needs to have attended school in-person learning programs. I want to mention that. I'm afraid to mention it because I don't want to be superstitious and I don't want to jinx ourselves. But at the same time, I do want to announce that because I know how our students and our families and our staff, not just at the high school, but throughout the district, have worked hard on this to be able to see, to, to help with that. And that's something that when we do have these things to celebrate, we should. We should honor those for it. So that's the update right now. We continue to, it's, it's tight and it's going to be challenging. As I mentioned, those guidelines are not going away in regards to the distancing. As I mentioned, those guidelines are not going away in regards to the distancing and the face coverings. Of course, today, it was one of our coldest days of the year, and so we also had a situation where students were not able to get outside as much. We had indoor recess today at the elementary schools, but the weather is supposed to increase. And so we're, we're optimistic that we can continue to, to continue to move forward with that. I'll take any questions or concerns or the people have.
Mr. Rue has a question.
I have a quick question, Matt. Coming back to the middle schools, how many total students will we be able to accommodate in the building and roughly what splits per grade?
I don't have that right down, John. I can get that for you with it. Yeah.
In the perfect world, if everybody was in school, we'd have roughly 800 students, 900 students there?
Yeah, we, we would have, yeah, I would say closer to 900, between 900 and 1,000 if everyone was in school for that. But that, we're not going to be able to accommodate that. And that's a good point, John, because we can look at those numbers because one of the things we're doing with this exercise to increase in-person learning, you've got to remember, all of our students are not back. We still have students who are comfortable and families comfortable doing the full remote option for that. But one of the things this exercise will do, it's going to allow us to see where we're at and what else we need to do to get our student, all of our students back, especially as we look to next fall, because that's the goal, to be able to do that. And so we're going to have, there's going to be some funds coming from the American Recovery Act that are going to be dedicated to basically getting our students back into school more. And, and so as we start to look at that, John, you're right, we don't have everybody back, but this will allow us to see what we've got and where else, if there's going to be additional staff or state spacing that's going to be needed so we can do that.
Thank you.
And I can try to get that information in terms of how we're looking at, how many currently are in and how many we're going to be moving in and what that number is going to look like. As I said, the, the goal right now is next Monday, the 22nd.
Exactly that reason, Matt. Looking forward to September, what can we do and how will we be able to accomplish that?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
As hard as the work's been, it's going to be something that can be, it's got a, it's got a bigger picture view to it. We're trying to also look at it down the road.
Amy, what do you have?
When you were just talking about the MPA and the discussion around spring sports, was there any discussion around this, you know, being a delayed start in the sense of like after April vacation? Was there any sort of like timeline discussion?
I don't, I'm not sure of that, Amy, but from everything I've been led to believe that there was, they're expecting, their, the goal is to have spring sports not be impacted and to start on time with that. So that is, I think that's, that's a theme I've heard coming back in terms of spring sports, of trying to, at least at the high school level especially, try to be able to have a regular rollout to those. Now, that may be difficult because sometimes the weather doesn't always cooperate even after April vacation, but before April vacation. And, and I'm confident that with our facilities and Athletic Director Gordy Sauls, they can come up with a schedule that will hopefully be able to allow people to come back and start up, still following the guidelines that are in place.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the directors' reports. It looks like we have Nicole Ivy with an adult ed.
Is it okay? What I'd like to do is, I did have, Nicole did send a good news item, and I thought it would be nice to share this good news item prior to Nicole giving a report because I think it kind of gets at the essence of community adult education. So Nicole and I had talked and I kind of thought, you know, maybe we'll do this at a future meeting. And then I said, you know what, if she's presenting tonight, I think this might be a nice introduction. So Nicole, I hope that's okay as I do this, but with the pandemic, like everyone, community adult education is impacted their student enrollment for that. But when you start peeling back those numbers, Nicole shared a story that the numbers won't tell you. So Kay is an English language learner whose country of origin is Cambodia. She became unemployed when a local manufacturer closed, and she shared with Nicole that before coming to Sanford Community Adult Education, she was sad all the time and cried often due to loneliness. So she enrolled with SCAE in 2019, and she comes twice weekly for instruction in English and in computers. She said that because of what she's learned with SCAE, she feels happy and free, and she loves talking with people everywhere she goes. She was also able to get a medical issue resolved by advocating for herself with her doctor. And recently, she had a job interview. She was so proud to tell the hiring manager that she can read and that she was so proud that she understood the verbal instructions of the trainer as she learned the new job. And she beamed as she told Nicole that her supervisor told her that she is a great worker. And so Sanford Community Adult, Community Adult Education measures outcomes in adult education through skill gains, degree attainment, successful transitions to career college, but often in adult education, outcomes are so much more than what is measurable. As Kay cried tears of joy in her office, Nicole thought, "This is the beauty and the purpose of adult education. The fact is, when one of us wins, we all win. The community wins." So Sanford Community Adult Education hopes to highlight her experience in a video series that they're working on in collaboration with Sarah Snell. So Nicole, with that, I'll kick it over to you to give an update on community adult education.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about adult and community education. As you know, I assumed the role of director in January of 2020, so just over a year ago. And I sat before you about a year ago in a pre-COVID world to give you an update on my first two months as director. Superintendent Matt Nelson has often referred to that Friday in March when we thought we would be out for just two weeks. And I have to say that every time he makes that reference, the theme song to Gilligan's Island plays over in my head. And so this is sort of our three-hour tour here at SCAE. We pivoted quickly to continue to serve our learners in March. We organized contactless packet drop-offs in conjunction with online learning. Despite these additional challenges, we celebrated the high school completion of 29 learners. In lieu of our traditional graduation ceremony, Lisa Blanchett and I delivered diplomas to graduates at their homes. Loss in this number, just as Matt highlighted in the precursor to this presentation, loss in this number of these 29, the number of 29 are these people's lives. We had a 25-year-old who was homeschooled but received no true instruction, a 34-year-old single mother of three, a 58-year-old lifelong construction worker. They built roofing trusses, they laid foundations, they constructed homes, and at the end of a demanding day at work, they came to class. They went on to pursue a nursing degree, an apprenticeship with a shipyard, and an HVAC program. Census data tells us that approximately 2,000 of our neighbors in Sanford and Springfield do not yet have a high school credential. I urge you to pause and think about the stories and lives of each of those 2,000, 2,000 people. Mike Fallon and I work closely to create a continuum between the high school and adult education for students who withdraw from Sanford High. Sometimes we're able to engage them immediately and offer a fairly seamless transition to adult ed. Other times, we plant seeds that we hope will grow over time in the world. Though when student involvement and success with us is not reflected in Sanford's graduation rate, we want all of our kids to succeed. So why is this important? Because we know that high school graduates are more likely to be employed, they're more likely to make a higher taxable income, they're more likely to aid in job generation, they're more likely to vote, they can serve in the military. High school graduates are less likely to need public assistance, become incarcerated, or require social services. Positive outcomes over the course of a lifetime are greater for those who have achieved their high school credential. And in the spirit of community wellness, when one of us does well, we all do well. In that vein, we have partnered with local stakeholders from York County Community Action, the York County Shelter Program, Caring Unlimited, and Sanford Housing in an effort shepherded by Sanford Housing to apply for consideration as an envision, as an envision center, which is an initiative of HUD. Envision centers are premised on the notion that financial support alone is insufficient to solve the problem of poverty. So partners focus on four pillars aimed at self-sufficiency to include economic empowerment, educational attainment, health and wellness, character, and leadership development. We are confident in the application submitted by Diane Gary on our behalf, and we hope to be selected as the 100th Envision Center in the United States. At SCAE, we align ourselves with the city's focus on economic development, and we see ourselves as a deeply invested partner. We are in the business of developing human capital. We invest in people who invest in our communities and businesses through employment and fiscal contribution. We are developing a ready workforce along what we hope will be burgeoning business growth. Last summer, we piloted a certified welding program in collaboration with SRTC, and we will begin another session this June. We've run two CNA programs with another planned for fall. In the future, we plan to collaborate with SRTC on a basic EMT course for adults as well as on an HVAC program once that's up and running. Additionally, we work with the Academy of Medical Professions, the Center for Legal Studies, to offer certifications in medical assisting, dental assisting, medical coding and billing, billing, paralegal studies, pharmacy technician, and more. We also have the versatility to work with businesses throughout the community to develop programming targeted at specific skills needed to meet the demands of the business or industry. In addition to high school completion of vocational programs, we have the privilege to support community members who are English language learners so they may more fully participate in the workplace and civic life. We have a strong community of ELL students, as Matt highlighted in our preface here, who contribute so much to our student body and to our community. Lastly, we offer college and career transition services to include advising, resume writing, job searches, help with college and financial aid applications, and more. Our college and career advisor serves in a dual role, and her other portion is student resources coordinator. She works in tandem with staff and with community partners to reduce barriers for students to include access to transportation, clothing, shelter, and other necessities. These supports are necessary to student success in the classroom, as we all know. Thanks to Ann Hanselman and Lori Williams and all the fine folks at the Sanford Backpack Program, we also have a food pantry onsite for our students as well. We have taken a multifaceted approach to growth throughout the pandemic. While we still produce and mail a complete brochure of course listings three times a year, we've also expanded our marketing outreach. Specifically, we work with local providers on referrals, we have increased our presence on social media, we've sent flyers through the Backpack Program distributions, we've canvassed entire neighborhoods with door hangers, and most recently, we've begun work with Sarah Schnell at WSSR-TV to produce short clips inviting the community in. We have a seasoned staff at SCAE, and they are truly the heart of our program. The work they do in the classroom has the power to change the trajectory of a person's life, and for many, it changes the trajectory of their children's lives as well. We know that education is not part of everyone's value system, and low commitment to school is often a component that is deeply embedded within family fabrics. If we engage parents to think about and pursue their own education, our hope is that we will see these results in our K-12 system as well, specifically with regard to reductions in chronic absenteeism, disciplinary violations, and withdrawals. Looking ahead, we share the goal of the district in keeping students enrolled at the traditional high school, and to that end, we work closely with the school counseling department to offer credit recovery. We're proud of the role we play in ensuring students' continued matriculation, and we're prepared to continue to support student needs, especially in the face of COVID and its lasting impacts. We continue to grow our enrichment program with courses in computers, knitting, sign language wellness, baking, a slate of offerings, and our in-house art studio, Arts of Fire, and much more. Stay tuned also for more information on a forthcoming driver's education program. Thank you for affording me the opportunity to provide a macro-level look at adult education. I'm deeply passionate about the Sanford community and about adult education as well, and as with gratitude that I serve as director. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks Nicole. We have, we have some questions, follow-up, anything that is interested?
I can't even come close to following that. Pretty tough, Nicole.
Thank you so much.
It's amazing. I actually brought the booklet that I get, because I always go through it, and I'm always like, "Oh, I want to do that," but I can't do those days. So I think it's amazing. Thank you, thank you.
I do too.
Yeah.
So the one question I have for you, Nicole, is what do you need from us?
Yeah.
Continued support. I think really in March, the feeling was that we were closed, and we were closed for a time from March until June. And then we were back onsite in June, we welcomed students back onsite in July, and we've been operating onsite ever since. We found remote learning has worked well for some, just like in the K-12 system, mostly students who are motivated and really are, you know, self-motivated and driven. Remote learning has not worked for everyone, and so we just are continuing to get the message that we're open, we're still holding classes, and there are remote and onsite options available for people.
All right, well, I, I think I speak for everyone when I say that we appreciate your super hard work and definitely your vision. I, I think you're, you're like the perfect person to have in the spot, so we're, we're behind you 100%.
Yeah, John, I think I talked, talked a little bit about this with you guys, that in my six or seven years with, on the school committee, Delta, aside from Kendra, Kendra was very passionate about Delta, but I don't remember us really talking a lot about it. And I think the more we do talk about it here, it brings a, an awareness, I think I used the word branding, Nicole, and it just means we're going to, you know, remake the building and have a new logo and mascot or anything, but we need to brand it in the community and make greater awareness to it, that it's here and alive and well. Thank you, Nicole.
I definitely think you've done an excellent job with the marketing on like social media because I definitely have seen many, many of the classes being, you know, shown on, you know, Facebook and whatnot, just, and it does, every time I'm like, "Oh, let me go look into that, let me go look into that." So great job with that.
Thank you.
Good, anything else for Nicole? Okay, well, thanks for taking your time, Nicole. And let's move on to Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Bussier, what do you have tonight?
Good evening. I have a couple of updates this evening. I'm going to start off with our summer school nutrition program. Last week, we received notice from USDA that the waiver to offer free meals to children in our community, birth to age 18, has been extended through the summer. In Sanford, we have traditionally been able to offer free meals to our kiddos because of our free reduced lunch percentage. So this was not really any different than what we've always done, but the good news is that the meals can be consumed off-site, and that is new. So that should increase the opportunity for families in our community and increase participation. An update in the YMCA Distance Learning Academy that we partner with the Y to run. With the return to in-person learning four days a week for elementary students, the program has stopped for our elementary kiddos except for Wednesdays. They are continuing to operate the program on Wednesday. The Distance Learning Academy for students in five through eight continues, and it will continue to operate as long as we are in a hybrid learning model and potentially expanding beyond that if we're not able to get all our kids back. So we continue to be, engage in conversation with the YMCA and very grateful for the support that they are providing us. The wellness team, the Sanford Wellness Team met last week. The Sanford Wellness Team supports wellness activities throughout the district for students and staff. At the building level, staff continue to incorporate both physical activities and activities to support students' overall mental health. Some examples of recent activities include sledding, spirit weeks, and mindful activities within the classroom. March is National Nutrition Month, and to promote healthy eating with staff, the Wellness Team is providing a healthy snack for staff later in the week. And just like to thank Holly and her crew for helping us organize this, and thank you to Amy and Paula for joining the Wellness Committee as well. On the transportation front, it has been a busy couple of weeks as we have looked to increase in-person learning. Just like to thank the Ledgmere drivers and the office staff at Ledgmere. We have had to make a few route adjustments at the elementary level, but we made it happen today. Some of our buses are running at capacity, so we appreciate parents that continue to transport their kiddos. That is helping us tremendously in getting all kids back. Ledgmere, in terms of a staffing standpoint, they are short on drivers. They've had a few drivers leave them for a variety of reasons. They are really in need of anybody that has a license in hand and can get on the road immediately. They do have some drivers in queue, but they really need licensed drivers that are ready to go. So if you know anybody who's interested, please reach out to Ledgmere directly. He combines interesting facts, details, detailed research, humor, and realistic illustrations that memorize children everywhere. Jerry has written many books, including the Icky Bug Alphabet Book, Story Story, and Butterfly Counting. Evening will begin at 5:30, and Title I staff leading the parents and their children in fun activities to support learning at home. So we encourage all Title I children to attend. Information went home with students today. And just to put something on your radar, we will be having a dropout prevention committee on Tuesday, April 6th at 3:15, and members of the committee who are part of that dropout prevention will be sending an email out tomorrow to folks to see if that date will work. And that is all I have for you this evening until we get to policies. Any questions?
Any questions for Steve? Anybody? No, looks good. Thanks, Steve.
Actually.
Oh, wait, Amy has one.
So Steve, the Title I Parent Event, that is for District Y, right?
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks, Steve. Next we have Beth Lamper. What do you have first, Beth?
Not too much tonight. I did want to update you on the MEAs or the Main Educational Assessments. In the past, it was a fairly lengthy test that would take up almost a week of class time for grades three through eight, and it also included the SAT for our grade 11. The state of Maine did not renew that contract with that company, so they have gone a different route because they felt that teachers and administrators needed more immediate feedback on where their students are at in their knowledge and skills. Prior to this, the MEA results wouldn't be returned to the district until the following fall, which is good for district planning, but not the greatest for immediate feedback for teachers. So they have just finished signing contracts with NWEA, which is an assessment that Sanford has been using already since 2002. So that works in our favor. Our students and our teachers are already familiar with the platform. So the state will be having us do NWEA for reading and math in grades three through eight, as well as the third year of high school or 11th grade. And then they signed a contract with a company called New Meridian that assesses next-gen science standards. And again, that's for grades three through eight in the third year of high school. And that will actually reduce the amount of time that students will be taking the assessments, which will help give back some instructional time to our teachers and kids this year. And what is nice is, one, it continues with the data that Sanford's been using for 19 years and gives the teachers that immediate feedback. And they're going to do this for at least two years before they make decisions on where they're going to go next. And that's what I have for you guys tonight. Any questions about that?
Beth, can you repeat again? What grades is the science cover?
Yep, it's the same grades, grades three through eight, and then they call it the third year of high school or the junior year of high school. That's what it assesses.
So it's not grades five, eight, and a...
Oh, my goodness, yes. My apologies, I wrote my notes down wrong. NWEA is three through eight, the science is grades five, eight, and 11. My apologies. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. So it's just three.
I find that's the head of this circus.
That's right.
Any questions for Beth?
I do. Hi, Beth, how are you?
I'm good. How are you tonight?
Just when you mentioned the grades three through eight for kindergarten, first and second grade, what will it be? The individual teachers having to do sort of those assessments, or is there another program?
Nope. Sanford normally, in the past, has used NWEA for grades K through 10, so will continue K through 11 now. The difference is the certain grade spans will just be used as the state, part of the state assessment system. The others are just for our own feedback and where the district's at. And the state will be reimbursing districts that already use NWEA. They'll be, or NWA will be reimbursing for what we've already paid for it, since the state is now taking over the contract for those certain grades.
Thank you.
So yeah, well, NWA, even though the state assesses grades three through eight and then one in high school, will continue to assess K1 and 2. That's our universal screener, as Beth has talked about. We've done that, and that's what we're used to, and that's what we use to help, you know, guide our curriculum.
Excellent. More efficient standardized testing is a good thing.
Yes.
Okay, anything else for Beth? No, okay. Thanks, Beth.
Welcome.
New business. Looks like we've got school committee schedule for '21, '22 up first.
I mean, looking at your recommendations, I know you don't look more than like a week ahead anyway, which I was just going to say. I have no idea. Sure, I'll go for it.
It sure sounds good.
I'll show up in my account, which I usually do.
Yeah, so to help with future planning, we are looking ahead. So what you have tonight is the proposed schedule for the remainder. Remember, typically, we've always tried to go the first and third Mondays of each month. Sometimes that can be challenging because oftentimes holidays do come on Mondays that can impact some of that. So this will continue to look at, it's very similar to what we've done this year. It does take into account the trying not to, if possible, have back-to-back meetings or week-to-meetings, if possible, with that. We do that in September, though, because you have Labor Day on September, holiday on September 6th, so we'll meet on the 13th, and then we will turn around and meet on the 20th. I think that's important because that's right at the beginning of the school year. Oftentimes, we can have our individual programs and schools reporting out, so I think that would work out fine to go back-to-back there. And then you'll see October is the first and third Monday, November is the first and third Monday, December's the first and third Monday. In January, we're going to go the first Monday, but the third Monday is the Martin Luther King holiday, so we'll meet on that following Monday, following on January 24th. And then that will also keep us in line with February 7th. Remember, that's around our budget time, where we also will have our school committee budget workshops through the month of February. The 21st is the President's Day holiday, so we will meet on Monday, February 28th, and then for that, because that's going to have to be a day for us, it looks like, probably to approve our budget so that it can get to the Budget Committee in that first Thursday in March. And then we do move the meeting in May. Instead of meeting the first Monday in May, we'll meet in the second because due to the Patriots Day in April, that would now moving that May ninth back would prevent us from meeting in back-to-back weeks. That would still spread that out, and then the same thing goes right into June. So it's pretty similar to what we've tried to been able to do in the past.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the '21, '22 school committee schedule as presented. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Rue. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? So it's unanimous, Matt? And then I see the next three items are COVID-19 items that will go on month-to-month. It's the same thing, I'm assuming, so I, please make a motion with all these together, you think? Anybody have an issue with that? Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve the COVID-10 sick leave benefits as presented, approve the amended COVID-19 sick bank for SFT collective bargaining agreement under Article 9 Sick Leave as presented, and approve the amended COVID-19 compensation schedule for SFT collective bargaining agreement, Article 13 as presented. Do I have a second? Second from Paula. Any discussion?
Just the conversation we've had, Matt, over the last weeks, months now, I guess, about this topic is, can you get us some information, whether it be right now or in a couple of weeks? What, if any, monies have been expended on that? On any of these?
Yeah, we can get some of that. We'll get, I don't have it for you tonight, but I know Cheryl Forni has been looking into that, and we can get that pretty easily. We remain confident as we monitor that, that that's not, there's no situations where it's becoming a big detriment to the department or any abuse at all. It is, right now, there are opportunities where it has been utilized, but not in a lot of cases, to be honest with you. But we'll get those numbers to present the next time. Sorry, I don't have them tonight.
It's all right. It was kind of a short answer. I wouldn't be surprised if it had been a few years. I think it's good that we have it, and I'm sure it won't get used to too much, so we're just curious.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All in favor? That's unanimous, Matt. Next, we've got the winter athletics stipends. Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, I just wanted to, our winter season's wrapping up here. It did look, due to COVID, it did look different in the sense that they were meeting virtually at the beginning. They kind of got a little bit of a late start as York County was in yellow, and then we navigated our way through that, but we ended up having a season that did get extended a lot longer through February and the early part of March. So in this situation, based on how that compares to how athletics has been handled in the fall and last spring, this is by far the most that has been done in those areas. So I just wanted to recommend that we follow what their normal stipends are based on the per Schedule B in the bargaining agreement with that. I think this is something that Athletic Director Sauls recommends, and especially in the conversations I've also had with our teachers' union as well as being on board. So that's the recommendation.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize payment of winter athletic stipends per Schedule B-2 of the Sanford Federation of Teachers Bargaining Agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Amy, reluctantly. I'll do it, nobody else is going to do it. Any discussion from anybody?
It's just a matter of making sure it would be equitable again, Matt. I know that Cody made a recommendation a couple of seasons ago that we didn't go along with. We kind of knocked it down a couple of rungs, and I'm just curious if you're comfortable with this. I don't really have a position on it, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so I've, if you look at it, Jonathan, in totality, it is here different from what is done to those. And in totality, in looking at how we handled the spring season last spring, how we handled the fall season, and then you look at what the coaches here accomplished in comparison to that, and so that doesn't, it's not equitable if you look at comparing them to those other two. The other thing that I did, too, was I checked around with area school systems and other school departments to kind of see, okay, how are you handling winter stipends? And as you saw, as we know, back in the fall and the spring, there were some differences in those. In this one, what you're finding is practically all are paying full stipends in this situation based on the combination of what they had to do, but also the season really got pushed back. We're talking about usually those winter sports seasons are being able to be wrapped up in the middle of February, and here we went back practically a month beyond that as well. So when you look at it from that lens, I'm comfortable with this recommendation.
Okay, I just worry about, you know, it always ends up with you, the school committee signs off, so the pushback will come to us. I just want to make sure that we're comfortable with this.
I think they actually did, you know, like Matt just said, in the spring and the fall, you know, a lot of those didn't happen, you know, so we did the 75%. If you look at what's happened with the winter sports seasons, they've really had a season. I think we're kind of getting back into that that more, so.
And not only do they have more of a season, but a much different season than we've ever had or they've ever had, right? When you start talking about all the protocols and all of those things that go into that, those are parts that were never part of it before, and those are added layers now that, yes, they were a requirement, but they were absolutely necessary as well. And kudos to our kids and our coaches to be able to follow through on those with that. I think you probably had some people that were concerned when we made that decision to move forward with our winter sports, but I think all in all, what you found is we handled that and really did a nice job with it.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous, Beth. Okay, the next item we have up is talking about our format that we're using, since we're in virtual. And I put this on here this week, because we did get contacted from a couple of folks as far as how the format was coming across. And we have, you know, it's a learning curve. So we started out, you know, it was 100% Zoom, then we wanted to try and get back in person. And we had some audio issues, I know, especially early on, trying to get used to using the owl camera and the microphones, as we would change rooms. So now we're up here, I think that definitely addressed the audio issues. Then I think there was some discussion last week, or just last week, at the last meeting, about having more of the presenter view, which we've kind of shifted over to that now. So I just thought it would be good to have a public conversation about it and just kind of put it out there and see if anybody's gotten any other feedback or have any other suggestions on what we should be doing. I mean, I'm not sure at this point, Matt, there hasn't been any discussion about when we'd be back to city chambers or anything like that, right? Because this stuff's starting to loosen up, yeah.
No, no discussion as of yet.
Well, at least I know there's long-term plans to keep the virtual aspect of it available once we're in the chambers again. Do you have any timeline on that from the city? Is that come up again? Or, because I know they're talking about getting new equipment installed on it. Yeah, they're talking about getting a, I think, kind of like an owl on steroids kind of setup, where you would have like the cameras.
Eagle.
Yeah, people have an eagle, I think, is the next step up. That's my understanding anyways, but I have no idea if there's a timeline on that, so. Because I know the mayor had expressed, like, she thinks that the virtual aspect of it should stay part of it, and, you know, the technology is there. She has people that can't get out of their houses or want to participate.
It lends greater participations, no question about it. I wish that we could do it right here in the school, get a studio. This meeting room right here is correct, not for the audience, but, you know, I just, my two cents, I'd love to do it in the school with SSR TV participating. Maybe in Asia, maybe it's in the auditorium.
Oh, my God.
Just saying.
Definitely something to consider. I think the other aspect of it, when we were talking about this, Liz pulled out some of the policies, because we have an actual policy about the format of the meeting, so the question is whether we have to kind of go down that road, if there's anything to change the policy or...
Well, we're living in a pretty bizarre time, I'm sure, that it's hard to meet all the policies. We probably didn't even know. If we're working against the policies, we don't even know. It's kind of like, the word pivot seems to be the new word, right? We had to move and change, and here we are.
So that was what I was just going to say, John. Did you look at policy? Are we following it somewhere?
Well, what's happened now is because of the emergency state, you know, at the state level, they allowed the virtual meetings and all that, so that emergency order from the state level has allowed us to kind of do whatever we need to do now. I think the thought was kind of going down the road. If we're going to continue to have this virtual aspect of it, then that policy would need to be updated, because it doesn't address any of that. Because when the policy was written, I already think the technology was available, so.
So the virtual content that we talked about, whether we're professionals at Zoom or not, and I certainly am not, so Matt, and kudos to you for doing what you're doing, because you're a huge failure. Oh, it's one of the controls. But moving forward in policies, if we're going to have it back to real meetings with a virtual audience, how do you, how do you do a, really, how do you manage that really well in the eyes of the taxpayer? Because you're apt to not see a hand up or not give somebody the time they think they deserve. It's hard to do in a Zoom versus live, so I'm a little concerned about whatever we update our policies on. It's going to take some time to vet that.
Okay, could be great for more.
I think, you know, I'm not taking one iota either, but when I watched a meeting, I can't remember where it was, and they must have had a similar situation as to the owl, so when I look up there...
whatever we update our policies on. Well, it's gonna take some time to vet that.
Okay, could be agreed on.
I think, you know, I'm not taking one iota either, but when I watched a meeting, I can't remember where it was, and they must have had a similar situation as to the owl. So when I look up there, you know, it's kind of odd, like me and, I think maybe you, Jonathan, but you're kind of missing everything else. And I do wonder, um, what else apparatuses there is out there that kind of gets us all the same picture. Um, you know, just because of, you know, corporate meetings, they can't just be, they want to have everybody in the room.
I think part of it's tough now, because we have, we're sitting spaced apart.
Correct.
You know, once we're back and we're back, if we do go back,
If you people were joining me up here, I would,
And we'd all shit in this room.
Yeah, exactly. It'd be more of a tighter you.
I think that's probably technology. Um, and I think, Matt, it was, I know it was Lorraine DeShaw who brought to my attention, and I think whether it's she, you know, Paul Ogier is very, uh, uh, capable of teaching. Look, there are lots of folks out there that are experts at this that might be able to put on some, um, presentations for, for the PIAAS or the council or other groups in the, in the, in these settings, so. And that was offered to us by Lorraine. I'm not suggesting that we have to do that, but it's certainly something, if we're gonna continue in this virtual world, we, we, we need to be ready for it.
Yeah, and the little bit I got about what they're talking about doing at the, uh, chambers, it, it sounded like somebody would kind of be running the, the camera, if you'll read on the laptop. So they probably could bounce around whoever's talking and so.
But, but who's, who's?
Yeah, it's at the chair now that's running the show and also doing camera work. Or do we need somebody separate still? So.
Ten seconds. There's more to come.
Exactly. I, you know, I just think it's good to put this out there so that the public knows that we're talking about it. And so, yeah, Matt?
Yeah, and I, and I think, uh, you know, I, one of the, it was mentioned earlier, I think one of the takeaways is this virtual component is here to stay. Uh, and I think you're gonna see the chambers being able to be updated for that, to be able to make sure that everything is there that you need to be able to come back and do that. And that would allow probably some more space. It would allow people that, uh, still want to come and meet in person when that's allowed, can do that. And people can also be able to come back and, 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 uh, stream and participate, uh, that way. And that also gives us a, um, a designated space. It gives us some more parking. Typically, at that time, the school committee meeting is the only action going on. If we were to come back and try to move out of the chambers into air, other areas, uh, for example, coming down here, it's okay now, but once school picks up again and being able to come back and do that, you could find some more challenges. So I'm, I'm confident that the vision of the city is they're lining up their technology to be able to come back, and I think we'll be a big benefactor, benefactor of that, to be able to come back and, as people said, offer something up that is gonna allow more people to participate. At the end of the day, that's a good thing, and that's what we want.
It's, it's gonna be, the length of the meeting could be extended greatly, and then we're just gonna need to talk about, when it comes to public comment, you know, the effort to go to City Hall, sit there and get to the podium and talk is much more involved than sitting at home and putting your screen. And so you, you could have thirty people commenting on a regular basis. That's, you know, that's forty-five minutes to an hour.
Wouldn't that get into, you know, not getting into the weeds, but that gets into the details of the policy?
That's right.
A policy where if you are gonna make a statement and it's, you know, longer than a minute or whatever, you've gotta do it in person.
Yeah. And maybe you can present something to us ahead of time, so.
Right. There's lots of ways to.
Okay, well, it's on the radar, and we'll, uh, we'll keep it, keep it going, so.
So what's your recommendation?
Oh, there's no actual recommendation.
I see that.
I think Liz probably should put that in there in case we have one.
Oh, okay, all right.
So. Recommendation is to not make a recommendation right now.
Well, I think if, I think we should say to the public who are watching, if you have feedback that you think and that you're in the know of how to try to help us improve, then share it with us, right?
Right.
Because none of us are in this world of like, you know,
Yep.
public meetings in the sense of like, create them on.
We, we love public input, so.
Yeah.
Schoolcommittee@sanford.org. Email away.
I appreciated, uh, the comments that were brought from Lorraine. But she had some really good ideas and suggestions, so, yeah.
Great, okay. Um, so item K, um, tabled since Shonda removed her request. Uh, resignations, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, so some resignations to announce. Um, we have Pat Adams from Food Service. Uh, wanna thank her for all of her years of service. Uh, Amanda Brewer as health teacher at, um, that's not, that's an error there, that should be at Willard School. Uh, Crystal Shaw as one of our, uh, COVID, um, custodians. Um, and then Scott, a couple of coaching, uh, resignations. Scott Shepard is eighth grade softball coach, and Lisa Villandry as girls tennis coach.
Good. And as always, we wish them nothing but the best.
I'm not sure I'm,
Tell maybe Scott.
Yeah, I'm not gonna accept Scott's resignation.
Well, if you look at it, it's 2019.
Oh.
He's an eighth grader. We should call him that.
That's right. Okay, uh, staff appointments, Matt, before these guys keep going off on Scott?
Sure. So, uh, yeah, uh, we do have some, uh, COVID, uh, custodian, uh, positions, um, for that. We have Ashley Beach, uh, Nylee Labier, um, a, um, Cassandra Minky, and, uh, Shayna Viera, uh, for, um, COVID custodian positions. And then we also have as an ed tech at CGL and special education, Tasha Baker, uh, as an ed tech, uh, special education at CGL, Caitlin McGinn. Uh, and then, uh, we also have a long-term substitute for the ed tech, uh, literacy at Carl J. Lamb, and that would be Vicki Smith.
Excellent. Welcome aboard to all of them. And then what do we have? Spring athletic appointment, Matt?
Yeah, that's what we have for the middle school and the high school. You'll see the, uh, spring, uh, coaching appointments. And I gave the update earlier on the, um, on the information coming back for looking like having a spring season. Um, also somewhat normal. Obviously, we have to still follow, uh, guidelines, but it looks like, uh, we're moving ahead with that.
Gotcha. So I don't see the eighth grade softball coach. Are you still looking for one? Does Scott's leave us in the lurch?
Still working on that. Yeah, we're still, there's a, a, working on that, and, and same thing with the girls tennis, with the resignation, working on that as well.
Gotcha. Thanks, Matt. Um, okay, staff transfers. Looks like we have one there.
Yeah, that, uh, looking to transfer Kevin Austin from a second shift custodian at the middle school to a maintenance position district wide. Uh, right now, that is, uh, gonna be on hold as far, that's to be determined, because we've gotta be able to work on getting, um, Kevin's position posted, uh, at the, um, his custodian position. So right now, uh, he's in line for that. As far as the start date, that's still TBD.
Gotcha. Well, congratulations, Kevin. Uh, staff nominations, I see none. Uh, so then we'll move on to policies. Uh, Mr. Lucie, it looks like we have a first reading for graduation policy. Very exciting.
Um, policy IKF, which is a graduation requirement policy. Um, policy IKF was last updated in August 2017, but if you remember back on June 5th, 2019, Governor Mills signed into law PL 2019, which basically repealed proficiency-based learning, um, and proficiency-based diplomas. And so we did not update our policy at that time. Um, so it's time we need to update the policy. And so the major changes to the policy before you tonight, um, basically, there's the elimination of the proficiency-based diploma requirements and the proficiency-based language that was throughout, um, the old policy. It also adds the one credit of personal finance, uh, which we currently, um, offer and have been offering for a couple of years now. Um, those are really the major changes to this policy. Everything else is intact. Um, we did bring this policy to the high school, um, department chair meeting last week, and we did have a conversation in regards to the English credits. Currently, in Sanford High School, um, students are required to take five credits of English. We talked about lowering that to four credits. Um, and the department chairs really felt like, um, that was not a major issue. Um, and they wanted to leave it at five. Um, there's a mix of districts around Southern Maine. Some require four, others require five. And so the department chair's recommendation is to leave it at five. But, um, to allow that fifth credit to be taken any of the four years, um, with one English credit, um, occurring each of the four years, a student is in high school. So it does allow a little bit more, um, flexibility. And tho- those were the major changes to that. If anybody has any questions, I can try to answer them, or, um, Beth Lambert, feel free to chime in as well.
Okay, anybody have any, uh, questions on the changes? Well, I'm just getting rid of the proficiency-based language. So, I forget the personal finance, uh, credit we've given you over.
I would, I would probably start, um, cheering for two credits of personal finance.
We'll start with one and we'll work our way up.
Well, I, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to accept the first reading of policy IKF as presented. Do we have a second? Second from Paula. Any discussion? Buddy, are you all good? Okay, who's, Paula, all in favor? All in favor. That's unanimous, Matt. Good work, Steve.
Yeah, like, this is a lot of work, so, yeah. I, I read it at home. I hope it's a lot.
Yeah, for everybody watching at home, we do get the material ahead of time, so we've done our homework. We're not just, uh, slided through Christine. Not just doing what Christine told us to, even though that's really not that bad.
Amy, you're just beginning on policies too. With Dawn, how big is the book?
I was, I usually just look at it online.
Oh, yeah, I, I printed them before I became a, a school member. Just thought I would run through them one night, not to happen.
Oh, she thought she was gonna get tested before she did.
Yeah, I actually didn't think I was gonna get tested when we were having that, though, like, I don't know.
Before the kids were?
Yes, I actually thought that that's what it was about.
That's awesome.
You would be on the school committee.
Yeah. Okay, uh, items for a future agenda? Anybody items that we don't already have listed? I think we've already got like three months' worth of meetings out there for future stuff. All good? Um, calendar announcements. Uh, first one, uh, this Wednesday, we did have a WSSR TV call planned. I think I'm gonna have to change that because I had something come up at work, but I'll talk all about that after the meeting. Uh, budget committee meeting is Thursday, the 18th at 6:00 PM. Um, that's discussion of the city budget and a joint public hearing. Uh, so if you're watching at home, that is public hearing night for the budget, so that's your chance to, uh, kind of speak up. Good point, Paula.
And Dawn, Dawn, just a reminder too, the budget committee also would like the, uh, the city council and the school committee to be in attendance for that joint public hearing.
Yes. So put on your calendars. It is Zoom, so you can take it at home with your jammies. Just don't turn your camera on.
Yeah, Matt, I will, Matt, I will be aware. I'll try to connect, uh, remotely, but, um, it's gonna be, anyway, I'll tell you when later. I, I, what's that? My, it was, um, so, no. So, Dawn, I just want to mention the, the book that, um, we received.
Damn, gee.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. This, the book we received, Matt, is pretty, pretty cool. And we got it a couple of months ago, I think.
Yeah.
And I just, I had it on my desk. I'm meaning to bring it to just thank those who gave it to us, but it's, for the folks unaware of it, it's kind of, it's a fast read.
It is. And it's very sweet.
Inspirational. It's, it's, it's a good book. Anyway, comment on that.
Gotcha. Well, maybe, uh, for a future, uh, item agenda, we can have JMG, uh, present. I think we usually do have them come in once a year, so. Um, okay, so that was, that SRTC advisory committee is Friday, the 19th. Uh, we've got another budget committee meeting on the 25th at 6:00 PM. Uh, budget committee on the 1st at 6:00 PM. Uh, Monday, the 5th, is a safety committee meeting. Uh, Monday, the 5th, is also our regular, uh, school committee meeting. Uh, we've got city budget on the 6th. That's the city council. We'll actually take the, uh, the budget recommendation that night, right, Matt?
That's the plan, I think, yes.
And then Monday, uh, April 12th is the wellness committee. Uh, we have our second san, uh, regular school committee meeting in April on the 26th at 6:00 PM, um, skipping April vacation week, right? And then, uh, on the 30th is SRT, sort of, uh, advisory. Anything else you want to add to that, Matt?
Yeah, a couple of things. Uh, teacher negotiations are this Wednesday at 3:00 PM. Um, and then we also have a negotiations planning meeting tomorrow at 9:00. Those are both via Zoom. And then we did send this out, um, uh, late this afternoon, is we do have a couple student, uh, disciplinary hearings that we have to schedule. So, uh, we're trying to look at next Monday, uh, March 22nd for those two. I also anticipate, um, a potential meeting with the school committee for us to have a, uh, a budget meeting. Uh, a budget, um, I wouldn't call it a workshop, because I would think the school committee will need to have a budget meeting if we have to take any action on the budget for us to present that to the budget committee uh, prior to their, um, March 25th meeting. Uh, yeah, so, looking at that, I've, uh, we've kind of identified this coming Monday, the 22nd, as a way to have those two disciplinary hearings and also, um, that budget meeting if we need it. I know, I think, Jonathan, you're, uh, not available on that day. Um, but I don't know how other people, I don't know how other people's schedule looks like on March 22nd, if we were able to put those two hearings together in a budget meeting.
Um, yeah, I think myself, John, and Amy all were affirmative. I'm not sure about Paula.
Yeah.
Paula's affirmative too, so. Jonathan's the only one who can't make those, so it sounds like we're good, Matt.
Hey, Matt, just one more quick question. Coming back, I got a lot of Zoom meetings sent to me today, so I did review them, so maybe I answered a question and I don't get the answer. But the Thursday night's meeting, is the invitation that's sent out?
Yes, I sent, I forwarded information for the budget meeting that includes the Zoom link and all of that information. Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
If you can't find it, let us know.
No, I just, I had quite a few.
It's somewhere, yeah.
And I just wanted to make sure.
So will we be meeting in person on the 22nd here?
It's a Zoom.
On Monday, or is it a Zoom?
It's a Zoom. It's too near. It's, it was a Zoom. Uh, should we be in person and then they can Zoom in? How do you want to handle that, Matt?
It would be your choice. Right now, typically, we would have the, uh, family, uh, families Zoom in. Um, we could have a similar arrangement to like we do now, like, uh, tonight, uh, with that, where they would be able to be on Zoom. Uh, so that would be probably the preference of the school committee.
Yeah, I would say for that. Yeah, probably in person for us to have them Zoom in, so. We'll, uh, I'll talk with you about that offline, Matt. We need it all set up.
Okay, good.
Okay, anything else for the calendar, Matt?
No.
Anybody else? Anything else you'd like to announce to the calendar? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Mr. Rue makes the motion. Mr. Babysack is, all in favor? All in favor. We are officially adjourned. Everybody have a nice night.